We are good to go.
Hey, I would uh want to welcome everyone to um Bellyham CBA September fifth meeting and I would uh like to open the public meeting. Um do they need a commotion Rob to do that?
What?
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Uh so we have a continuation of the public hearing um for the Purple Paws LLC applicants. Um Rob, you wanted this as caught up on where we stand?
Yeah, I know it's been a little while since we last met. I know the applicants here. Um I believe at the last meeting, there's a lot of discussion on um well, basically, conditions that could potentially be put forth at the project. So in your packets, there's actually two draft decisions. There's a draft approval and a draft denial. Um obviously, we haven't discussed these yet in a public setting. So if um you know, depending on which route the board goes, we have to make sure that the decision is encompasses everything that the board is feeling as far as approval or denial. Um with that, we also received some new information just recently about um sound, basically a sound memo from, I think it was Tech Environmental, which I also put in your packets um which the applicants, you know, they want to discuss. That's up to you, Adam Chair. But that's pretty much my update of what we are at currently.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, so why don't we hear from the applicant? And um I would expect that we want to hear from them about, you know, the new information and um the the sound memo, uh because you know, that's that's before us.
All right. Good evening, Chairwoman and Board members. Scott Ambler, I represent the applicant, Purple Paws. It's been before you a couple of times. I don't think, unless you tell me otherwise, that I have to really do any kind of summary of of what it is. As Mr. Lucier stated um at our last meeting, uh I I think we were more or less uh addressing all of the the matters that, you know, had come up. But I can't remember. I think it might have been Mr. Salisbury who did the explore the idea of noise mitigation measures. And you know, what we did was my client contacted a uh basically Tech Environmental. They they went out, they assessed the property um and assessed some mitigation measures that could be taken. And what my client uh has stated that they would be um undertaking as part of the project is there is a sound mitigation I call it blanket. It basically would hang uh on the three outside walls of the uh outdoor play area for the dogs. Uh it would have a rating of uh sound. Don't hold me to all this very technical stuff. A sound transfer coefficient of of thirty. And what this does, uh and you can read the material as well. This material, this fabric that would be put upon the the fencing would uh cause a reduction at the site uh of the noise, a a thirty decibel reduction. Now, just to give you an idea of things, you know, a ten decibel difference in in reduction. Uh what that amounts to uh from a perspective of a, you know, layperson is that reduces the loudness of the noise by half. So a thirty decibel reduction would be quite extreme um and and helpful in this area. And what I would just like to emphasize is that uh this material and this fabric that would be placed on the walls would uh offer that mitigation right at the site of the noise. And then, as you know, you know, there's the fence itself. There is approximately sixty to seventy feet of open space, which is the balance of the property. There is a tree line. There is a six foot, you know, composite fence at the property line. There is the town's sewer pumping station. There is another tree line on the other side of that. And then, as stated, the closest uh of butter is approximately two hundred and thirty-six feet from the outer wall of the outdoor pen. And then, if you traverse the balance of the condominium project, if the that unit to the last unit, I think the last unit, which is the seven hundred units, you know, designation, they'd be probably about eight hundred feet away from, you know, the outdoor pen. So uh my client wanted to get that material. They've done their research on it. They had the company do the research. You have the pamphlet of uh the company that would provide the material as well. Uh you know, hopefully, that was transferred over to you. I tried to get that to you as early as I could this week when I got it. Um and you know, I think that that along with the other accommodations that are in the proposal um basically summarize where we're at. I I don't know if the board has any questions, obviously, but uh if you do, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them or have my clients try to answer them for you. But uh you know, other than making the walls like soundproof cement walls, you know, this is and and from what my client tells me, this material basically mimics what that would provide in terms of noise reduction.
Okay, um why don't we um see if there are questions from the board specifically related to, you know, the new material? So Peter, do you have anything?
I've got two.
Okay, yep.
And one is for the applicant, maintenance of this material and longevity of it. I mean, obviously, at some point, it's going to wear down, break down. And just if if approved, I want to make sure that it's maintained or replaced as needed.
I guess what I could suggest is, I I don't know if there's a were you ever informed as to life of the the material, how long it will last?
No, it's made for outdoor use. Um I guess they put it up in a lot of places, concert venues, temporary concert venues, things like that, but it's made to be outdoor all the time. So we're looking at two different products. Um they both have the same rating. Uh honestly, honestly, we want to go for aesthetics as well, because there would just lack math.
Want to make sure that we do move forward with this, that it's in the decision that is maintained and repaired as needed. My second question would actually be to Ray. See, we we found out a month ago you were a sound expert.
Yeah.
What is your opinion of material and the effectiveness of it?
Yeah, so um the applicant had mentioned that there's a reduction of thirty decibels. When I read it, it's actually a reduction of probably ten decibels, because you already have the fence. It's not a chain link fence. If it was a chain link fence, then it would have been reduced by thirty decibels, or what is equivalent to a bit more than double.
We are.
Oh, it's gonna be all this.
All changes right now?
No, no, no.
It's getting.
Also, you're gonna remove the uh the current fence.
No, no.
Oh, so you might not have been at the meeting where they talked about enclosing the outdoor area for the dog.
Oh, this is for the dog enclosure.
The outdoor pen.
For outside of that.
Right.
Okay, so I could see, I could see where this is just where the dogs are gonna go out.
Yes.
At one sixty by thirty. Connected to the building itself, correct. I see. So you're gonna reduce it by thirty decibels there. And then afterwards, you're gonna have the reduction pretty much from
What exists?
The existing fence in addition to that. Now I understand.
Trees and everything else it's already.
And so dogs are not gonna be uh in that, the dog will be going out in that area.
Ten dogs at the most at one time, at any point in time during the day, only in that sixty by thirty pen.
Yep.
Uh and then again, I think it should be in the material, but just to reiterate it again. Our the hours of operation would be from six thirty AM to six PM, but there would be no dogs outside before eight thirty in the morning or after four thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah, this this is in line with what I've seen in my industry. Pretty much you you set up this, it's kind of like a heavy tart uh with kind of dampeners in it. And it's just gonna dampen that that noise, uh making sure it's high is the big thing, because usually your noise wave uh is gonna go over and a little bit drops a little bit. So having that, you know, six foot height uh is important for this.
Yes.
So I would not kind of, you know, cut it in half, or I would make sure that it's that the length that you have set, six foot height chain link fence.
Yes.
Will cover the full length.
Yep.
Um and not leave any gaps in between, but.
No, it's gonna be on the sides and the back of the of the pen. Obviously, the other wall of the pen is.
Please does the work?
Yes, it would work.
That's my question.
And and given that it's a small enclosed area, yes. At first, I was thinking if it's gonna be a a more wider area, you can still have noise kind of travel over, but thirty decibels, I don't think it's gonna be thirty decibels, but still twenty decibel reduction is pretty high. Um that's that's more than, you know, double, because it's a log scale with the decibels. Um usually, they're they're pretty uh, the ones I've seen, I haven't dealt with this exact manufacturer, but they they should last multiple years, uh you know, five years or even more. But I I agree with Peter and having, if the board was to approve, I would definitely recommend maintenance uh and replacement of, you know, if it's worn.
Maintenance replacement.
Yeah, maintenance replacement as needed. Uh but overall, these these are pretty good. I see them a lot at construction sites when um noises are.
Thank you. Uh Jim? Any questions or comments?
No, I worry about the answers, Jim. So I'm good.
Okay, Brian?
Um I just say to the applicant that um, yeah, I definitely appreciate, I'm sure the rest of the board, that you guys didn't sound steady, because I think that was my main concern, but um I think uh this definitely seems like uh be more, it seems like a great measure, as much as you can do possibly. You know, reduce the sound and be, you know, good neighbors. So that's all I want to say.
No, that I only uh, my only question was, and I think Ray hit upon, I think the way I read the report, it's it's a, it's rated for thirty decibels, but the actual decimal reduction would be ten, right, though.
I agree. That's what it said at the in the conclusion. Said it can't, it's rated for thirty, but in reality, for this application, it's gonna be ten.
I have a question about the gap between the fence and the awning that's coming down. Do you know how big that gap is?
The awning? Yeah, between the top of the fence to be installed and where the awning will probably be coming.
Honestly, we haven't really determined that yet.
It'll be attached to the top of the fence.
That's a one-story building, so it's whatever that is.
It will come from the roof line and then, according to my applicant, what they're gonna try to do is attach it to the top of the chain link fence.
Touch it, there'll be no gap.
Or the gap would be fairly minimal. I can't imagine it would be much more than, you know, six inches to a foot at the most.
Okay.
I thought the question was that.
Still want airflow?
Yeah.
Right, um no, I I don't have anything else about um the the sound memo. I feel like everyone's covered the questions. I I think, yeah, my my only thing was um yeah, just making sure if we were to approve, making sure that we put this in the conditions and how how we want it and that it'll it'll be followed through and it's gonna be the the particular manufacturers that they're they have presented. So um so I think that's that's fine. Um.
One thing I would say to that is life does happen. Manufacturers go out of business, like or bad or private.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to hold them in a decision that has to be.
No, no, no. I wasn't thinking it would be one manufacturer, but you know, making sure that they're putting in what they're saying they're putting in. Yeah, yeah. Um okay, with that, Rob, do we want to open it up to the public about the sound memo? Or do we want to then now move on to the rest of the discussion?
I mean, it's up to the board how they want to proceed. Um obviously, you definitely want to get public input. It maybe yeah, whatever you guys want. I'd be interested in hearing what the public has to say about this change.
So if there's questions from the public, yes, um state your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Nappasello. I live in six oh three Crystal. Um listening to you all discuss, the first two things that just come to my mind is how is the um if they're gonna put down I forget what you call them, the soundproofing things. How is that gonna be monitored that it's maintained on a regular basis so that it you know, we know everything in life gets worn down and people don't attend to it. That's one question. And my other question is um I understand the timeframe that they're saying that the dogs are gonna be out and in. But um I know I brought up at the last meeting that you wouldn't remember, but I've been to dog, your your dog daycare is that when the dogs are in, they're exceptionally loud barking, because they're dogs and they just want to get out. Or if you have a dog that's outside, it's barking too much, so you bring it in, it's gonna get irritated. So you can still hear the barking when they're in the facility. It's not necessarily always when they're just outside. And that's my concern.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, thank you for your questions. I hope we answer that if, you know, in terms of um, you know, if we move forward and then we would put this in the condition about maintenance, so that would hopefully answer that question.
So we as as if this goes though, will we be informed? How is that gonna be maintained? Who is responsible? We don't know that, that these owners are going to actually maintain it to the level that they need to to keep it soundproofed, because we all plan on living here for a long time.
Yeah, well, actually, I should have mentioned too, we have our our building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, Tim Icardi here in the back. I.
So so I can answer, I can give you an answer to that. So um the product manufacturer has a description of the product and how it lasts, you know, whether it's the UV breakdown or whatever, but it's all by manufacturer's recommendation. So whatever the manufacturer recommends, the life expectancy of the product would be the replacement of it, so.
So the owners need to follow that? Who's like, who's monitoring this?
So so if if the manufacturer says, you know, um outdoor use of this product um is is only good for so many years, then that's that would be the replacement of it. So um it would depend on the product and, you know, how long it lasts.
I'm sorry, I'm still a little confused. Tim, I think she wants to know.
Recommendation.
What would be the mechanism to make sure that that's happening? Yeah, who monitors to make sure?
It's gonna pull permits for everything, okay? Everything is public record, so it would be in the jacket. So when they apply for all the permits, all the product data will be in that file. It's public information. So the the if if um if the product says, um you know, it's good for ten years before it starts breaking down, then that would be the maintenance point and that would be logged in under his, you know, decision. We will attach it to that. It'll be public information, you know. So if it starts breaking down and noise starts, if you you start to hear, it gets, you know, it's getting louder. That's probably why. So you know, I mean, there's gonna be a degree of enforcement for several items in this, you know, in this use. So you know, it's always in public information in our in the department.
Thank you. Uh um any other questions from the um public on the sound memo? Yes?
Tim McGee one oh one Crystal Way. I don't have a question about the sound memo. I still have a point of clarification about the distance between the outside wall from, so I'm the closest unit to them on the lower end. Um and I know, and he's not here tonight, but another resident did measurements from my wall to the to the vine, to the outside wall of theirs and came up with, what was it, Jim?
One. One sixty one.
A hundred and sixty one and but they're saying it's two hundred and something else, distance. So I don't know how that plays plays into this too. Like, is there?
If I can, if if what you're saying is your distance measured was a hundred and sixty one from your location to the to the property line where the existing fence is.
To where the outside um to where the outside pen would be where that line of fence is.
Well, the the outside pen is gonna be seventy feet further onto the property from where the existing vinyl fence is.
Okay.
So that with the one hundred and sixty one is, I think.
Yeah, do you want to turn that around, maybe, and show? Because I think that might clarify. I can actually pull it up on the screen too.
My math is two thirty-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been honest.
Fine. Right.
So this is the end of the property. This is the pump station.
Yeah.
It states on this plan that the corner of the building would be is two hundred and sixty-six to the closest condominium. And then the outdoor pen is the pink area, which is thirty feet deep.
Okay.
So that would reduce it to two thirty-six.
Okay.
According to the engineer.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thank you. Yes?
Can we only say things about the sound memo?
No, well, yeah, if you have other things, that's that's fine as well.
Christine Spillers, six oh two Crystal Way, um at the last meeting, um the council for the applicants mentioned the two houses across diagonally across from the area and that they have not shown up to oppose this. Um so they probably don't care. I did stop and at those two homes. One is a home that's rented and occupied by a half dozen day workers. No knowledge of any letter about this. Um and the other is an elderly woman who also insists that she never received a letter. So um just wanted to mention, it's not that they don't care. Or, well, the house that's being rented, they probably don't care, because they won't be staying there. So um it's um no interest to them to to fight with anybody about this or disagree about this. Um my other comment is, you know, you could stick a dog in a square box that has eight foot concrete walls on all sides, and if the box is open, you're gonna hear the dog barking. So you know, the this this whole thing about mitigating the sound, um even talking about these panels of, you know, a sound barrier and and mentioning using on a construction site, while that construction site has a time limit to it, it's not going to be for the rest of anybody's existence. And this is something that's, you know, as Susan said, we all plan on staying here. And this is gonna be five days a week, potentially more. Um if the applicants decide they want to go to a, you know, kennel situation where they have them on the weekends, this this is our life. And you know, I just want to mention again in the letter that we sent in, the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. We are the neighborhood and there's not a single positive effect on us. So just having to deal with any issues that come out of this business, if it is approved, will just override any beneficial effect for us. And noise is going to be an issue.
I have a question uh about that. So theoretically, the noise mitigation actually does work. Would then the project be okay by everyone present from the public? Is that 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 seems to be the main issue with this application, right? Is noise, hearing the dogs barking?
We're not allowed to talk about the traffic.
Right.
We recall that, right?
So whatever. You mentioned that in the past, and no matter what happens, if it's not this project, another project might come in, it could be another storage facility, which we've seen a lot of them come up recently, which add a lot more traffic than this. Uh but to to the point is for the noise aspect, if this noise mitigation works, I mean, there's two levels of fences around. And if theoretically, let's say, even if you don't believe it, if it works, would you be okay with the project?
If it was, if you you could say we wouldn't hear dogs barking?
It will be muffled. It will be quite more muffled than you might imagine. Um, yeah.
Okoto White from.
If you would please mention your name and.
Okoto White?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's my name.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
I live in seven oh one Crystal Way.
Okay.
My my question is that, uh, well, maybe I'm, I'm gonna stand up because I'm short. You're gonna call me. Well, theory and reality always differ. So in theory, it sounds good, like might work. But then after the facility is built and we all find out that they didn't like work and we are all annoyed and now are going nervous breakdown and going to start going to doctor and all that thing, then what do we do? I mean, obviously, the reality is different from theory, but what?
It's it's been tested. I've done it. I've tested these before and it does reduce sound barriers do reduce the decibels.
That's how full it's done.
Not theoretical at that.
Why work to a guy, then what do we do?
So if it does work, are you okay with it? Let's say it it does. It reduced it by ten, twenty decibels. And at that point, is that is that okay? The rest of the project, is it acceptable by the public?
Well, I I can, I think that our concern is yes, the noise level, but also the increased traffic. And as you said, it could be anything. But anything that comes in could possibly just increase traffic again, which is annoying, but we we deal with that. But we're we're, I think, as a group feeling, there's two components here. The increased traffic, we got the big warehouse that just built down the street that isn't even built yet. We got the Westerly down the street, we got the Curtis, you know, so increased traffic. And then there might be, you know, increased noise on our nice beautiful, private, lovely street that we love.
I I suppose the comment I'd have to make is but wasn't this particular project? If anything else was going in there from a convenience store or fast food to a self-storage, it'd be by right.
Right.
No decisions made, it would go in. No traffic studies, no special permits. We could have another rapid refill there with Amazon trucks, you know, and would not need approval, correct?
No, I mean, it would go before planning, but
Yeah.
Right, it would need a zoning variance, no?
Do you do you really think a rapid refill would fit in there with the the amount of space?
I can see a lot of projects throwing in it, to be honest with you. It's a good size lot.
Well, as our as our neighborhood letter said, we're willing to roll the dice. And we would say, yep, we will, we would take a chance on something else coming in there. Um, you know, and to to answer your question directly or like, how do we prove this without it actually happening? You want us to answer a question
Yeah.
that we really can't answer unless we're actually living in that situation or can be invited to someplace someone else's home that has a dog daycare that close to it um and spend a week with them. And then maybe we could answer the question, but we you're asking a question that's very difficult to answer unless we're actually living in that situation. And and if you say yes, it's a done deal and we pretty much learn that we're not going to have much recourse.
Is that right? So um before we get too far into anything else, Rob, can we just go back to the butter's letters? Could you just explain the process again in terms of how that works?
Yeah, butter notifications?
Right.
So there.
The um I'm sorry, I forget your name, but she mentioned the houses across the street didn't feel like they received the notification. So I just wanna.
It was, so, because we received the the certification of mailings, but essentially what happens is the applicant has to pull a certified butters list for three hundred feet within the property, which is why everybody was notified within the Crystal Way condominium association. So when that notification gets sent out, we get a green card or a white card back, which we have to receive to make sure that the notifications, it's basically a receipt saying that and we send. And the applicant did meet that criteria for this case. I know that if there was somebody that's renting a property, it would go to whoever the homeowner is. So that would probably be why the renter wasn't aware of it. The other situation is, I know that the US Postal Service is delayed, especially with the certified mailings. What may have happened was if somebody didn't receive a a notice, it will get bounced back to the post office. So that's why you'll get the did not receive, like, whether, I don't know if you've ever witnessed that. People can also refuse to take them because they think it might be a uh a collection agency. Um I've had that quite a few times. Um so that's how this notification works in this case.
And so for us, that notification went to our management company?
Hmm, I think.
I just just because I never received anything personally, so it would just go to one entity.
For a council, it's a record of everyone such.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know.
I mean, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, I have. I mean, I have the Butters list.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people knew the process, because, you know, if you're not familiar with it.
Yeah, that is the process.
Well, and I understood that too, and I wasn't doubting that the letters were sent to these other people. I'm just saying, we can't make a judgment call that they don't care about it, which was stated at the last meeting. And certainly.
I think I'm ready to make the motion. The public hearing, discuss it. I think we have a good amount of information unless someone else from the board would request more information.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All members of the board who would like to close the public hearing, you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who don't, say aye. So we have closed the public hearing?
Now we can discuss it among the board?
Yes, now we can discuss most of the board. Could we start here? You mean, Pauline first?
I'm already.
Right.
Yeah, gather the thoughts.
Okay, all right.
I, I, I can start. First of all, I'm a dog person. You know, I have my own dog. I like the idea of the doggy daycare. But on this one, there's no decision. I'm not saying my decision yet. But on this one, there was a big turnout from the public. You know, going against, you know, noise, traffic, the cost of the, you know, the price of their condos and their homes. And just, you know, being there all, all the time and just having to hear dogs, and their dogs reacting to the dogs in the daycare, so that, that says something to me. But at the same time, like I said earlier, the other alternatives that might come here that might not go before the zoning board might be even worse. Trucks going in, those are loud, they're not gonna put any noise mitigation. And the applicant really did a fantastic, you know, job coming back with more information, a detailed plan, detailed noise solution. So it was, it was thoroughly thought, thought through. It's, it's, it's definitely gonna be a difficult one. I don't know if the board's gonna have the same opinion. So we'll, we'll see, honestly, but it's definitely a very difficult one to, to, to go about. But.
Yeah.
So there's, ultimately, I'd go back to the zoning bylaws that were mentioned earlier, you know, which state that the benefits should outweigh the adverse effects on, on the area and the community. So I think that's gonna play a big role in my decision.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Peter's right.
Brooke, is it, if this was to be approved with the amendment of the maintenance and replacement as needed of the sound barrier, could there be something put in there that's inspected and going into last thirty years or something like that? Or if you have any legs that you can put in there?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't put that in there if you want inspection. I don't know, Tim, if you wanna.
Different condition.
Put a condition in there, just, it, it, it makes me feel better, knowing that, I mean, the applicant sees me going above and beyond. But, you know, instead of having ten dogs, they've only got five dogs and half the fence is torn down and we just can't do it right now type of thing. I wanna make sure it's always up and present. Can you write that down, sir?
I am.
Thank you.
I, if, um, one item too, I, I know that these facilities are typically inspected by Board of Health and for, from the Animal Control Officer. So it would be good to include this, so it can be kind of wrapped in.
So if, if they, so if they were to take, even when to do their inspection, they would see that as being one of our conditions, say, had the, the matting's down, you know, your, your clamp's holding it up, fell, let's get it fixed, that's one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to be clear, if I can just speak to one of the, for this draft decision, I believe it, it's condition number seven. It's regarding, the one with the yellow sticker, by the way, is a denial. The other one is, you know, this is on the. So for number seven, there was, when we initially discussed this, the idea was to do an opaque vinyl six-foot height fence around the enclosure, which is what I had in the condition. It sounds like this is now changing to a six-foot height chain link fence with basically the acoustic panels. So that would have to be changed on this. But then there is also a clause in here that the fence shall be contin-, or continually be maintained in good working order, and then we can add the inspection every five years to that.
Which I think we're better with the chain link in the sound barrier versus a vinyl fence. Because listening to other sound studies for another facility proposed project on the planning board, that standard vinyl fence does not give as much as this would give the sound barrier.
And it, and it doesn't sound, seem like this product is meant for a vinyl fence.
No, current one of vinyl fence.
Right. Okay.
Oh, yeah, no problem noting these things.
Okay, you're good. Jim, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, um, so I just, you know, just wanna reiterate that I think it all does come down to, you know, how it affects the public versus, you know, the value of it. I think the applicants have definitely done an excellent job of submitting information. And, um, I think, I don't have any questions.
Brian?
Yeah, I would agree. I think Ray kinda, I would definitely agree with them, that it's a hard, the tough one, because you wanna weigh kind of the concerns of the neighborhood and that there has been a big turnout from the neighbors. But I do agree that the applicant has done a very thorough job presenting their case. Yeah, but, so I don't really have anything else to add.
Brian?
I'm always suspicious of dog kennel applications. I think that the impact can be quite intrusive, especially over time. Having an intrusion of that kind near your home where you can't relax and just hear that noise all the time, it's, it's a horrible thing. So to me, the issue with this application is the sound impacts. Seems like the applicant has helped us quantify what those impacts would be and how we can reduce them. You know, I think there's gonna be some, some additional considerations, conditions perhaps, that I'll mention now and then another discussion for us to think about in terms of the conditions and just incorporating what the sound mitigation report put in as sort of their assumptions that there would be ten dogs at one time, always supervised. That would be one. The dogs would be screened for proclivity to bark. And the dogs that are rambunctious are not allowed to be outside, that would be a condition. That the, that the applicant's maintaining the screening in the rear of the property.
Yeah.
The wooded area and all of that stuff remains unchanged. Consistent with the recommendations of the sound person, that the screening, the sound mitigation screening is installed without gaps. The description of the project says there's an awning over a portion of the outdoor space. I would say it has to be over the whole space and that the gap is some, we don't leave that gap wide open, that it be, I don't know, foot, or something like that, that we control the sound escaping outside of the fence. And also, the application described the, these la-, larger panels that would have direct access from inside and outside for the dogs to transfer. And I would suggest that those doors be closed so that we do capture some of the indoor sound, doesn't come out the, uh, uh, from outside of those doors, and so the dogs will let out, the doors are closed. And all of those dogs, the doors remain closed, they go back in. Those are the additional conditions that I would suggest, but then something I would be interested in everyone's opinion is the hours that the dogs are allowed, are allowed to remain outside, that's a long time. I understand that the sound mitigation doesn't mitigate the sound. But if they're not outside, there's no sound. So I think eight thirty to four thirty is a, could be broken up into smaller intervals and give, give time for no dogs to be outside. For food for discussion.
And, and I'm gonna play off that a little bit. And first of all, I love how you like closed doors and everything. Now, what project is doors gonna be closed? Thank you, Riley. I, and I wanna talk about the dogs outside and number of dogs per se. Well, you brought a concern that just struck me is being a pet owner myself, previous pet owner. If we have sound barrier, maybe they can answer this, and there's no gaps, and we got a roof over it, with a very rule, yeah, how are these dogs gonna get air? I, I'm, in all seriousness, it's a pain to.
I believe it was addressed, like, when, when Mr. Salisbury mentioned it, you know, we could put something to say that there's the gap between the top of the fence and the canopy that will be built will be no larger than a foot.
No, no, and, and I, and I understand that, right? It's more of a concern that for the applicant, getting air for the dogs, if, if we're so closed up in sound barrier, you know, roof over it, will, is there gonna be enough circulation for the dogs being out there?
It's a fairly good size outdoor panel, it's a hundred and eighty square feet, you know, sixty by thirty for ten dogs. So they're not going to be on top.
Personally, for the dog.
Yeah.
And my, my question regarding the number of dogs outside at a time, for my hours of operation, ten dogs. And maybe I just need to have my memory refreshed. The max number of dogs that are gonna be allowed in the daycare for the day? Fifty. So ten dogs out there is five times, how long will the dogs be able to play here? Half hour, an hour?
Probably one hour.
An hour? Yes, it's about five hours. Maybe a couple of dogs go an extra time or something. And that's saying that they maxed out fifty dogs. I mean, that's.
Right now, it's supposed to be seven hours.
I mean, I guess if they're rotating at a max, so we'd have to prepare for a maximum, right? So if they have fifty dogs, they're rotating ten dogs every hour, and then it's not gonna go smoothly every time, right? So then you have two-hour buffer, figure that out?
I would suggest nine. No dogs between twelve and one, no dog after four, something like that, of that.
I mean, yeah, I just, I, I like, you know, the specificity in the conditions that you're proposing in, including this. I'm just wondering, how do we manage all that? If, I mean, someone would need to be making sure that there's no dogs out between twelve and one, five days a week, and, you know.
Well, that, that, to be honest with you, that is the easiest.
Well, yes, but you see what I'm saying, right? Like, operationally, figuring out which aggressive dogs can't go out because they're too, you know, all of that is really, is a lot of minutia, which would, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't explore those conditions, but that's, I don't know how we would, I don't know how.
There's no way for us to enforce. There's no way, if we're gonna put that in the condition, there'd be.
From the enforcer, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of.
Without being so.
From an enforcement standpoint, okay, I don't know what the process is gonna be, because I'm not sure if it was talked about. But I'm assuming they'll probably have a log of the dogs they take in every day for account. Yeah, I'm not gonna go out there, I'm not gonna go in there and start counting dogs. So I, I would, I'm sure they would have a log to show how many dogs that they would be required, you know. So see how many they're taking in, so it's under fifty. And then the, a log as to when they left the dogs out, so there's no more than ten. You know, so if there is complaints, at least I can go down there and say, how many dogs were out? You know, if it was, if it was ten dogs, and, you know, maybe they come to a solution where maybe, maybe it needs to be cut down to eight, you know, or they gotta change the dogs out. But I need something to be able to look at going down there. You know, I'm gonna be going down there after the fact. If people are gonna call and complain, I just need some kind of, you know, to look at some logs or something.
And it sounds like we have animal control here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was.
No, don't worry. So I don't know, maybe that would help the board if you wanted to comment a little bit on kind of the discussion. Is that allowed, Joe? Okay.
My, my concern, and Brian, I, I trust me, I applaud what you're thinking, is if we limit them to, you know, nine to twelve, one to four only, and, you know, they've got thirty, forty dogs in there, and, you know, nine to ten, we've got one heck of a thunderstorm and everything else, I'm not gonna bring the dogs out, those poor dogs don't get to go out because we limited them to that time, and that's why I think being.
Right, I think there does need to be some flexibility operationally. That's, you know, like, like a human daycare, things change, things happen, stuff happens, you know.
Right, so I, both of the conditions that I just discussed is actually in the sound report. There's the assumption that the dogs are gonna be screened, the dog's gonna be.
Right, right.
The applicant proposing these conditions, then we're just gonna incorporate them.
Okay.
We're not imposing any sort of operational limit on it.
No, it's just the time.
I mean, I just think, I don't care when the dogs go out. It's just, if there is a potential for the barking to, you don't know definitively how it's going to be with ten dogs barking, right? I think it's a good, I think that seven hours is too long. So I don't care when they go out, five hours seems more reasonable. And then the dogs don't need to be outside all the time. Right? Because it's going to be a constant rotation of dogs, so it's always ten dogs outside. The weather is, they're gonna be in an awning, so rain will probably bother them. I don't think that it's too long. The easiest way to enforce a limit in that way is to say, no dogs outside between noon and one. No dogs outside before nine.
I think it's eight hours, actually, if you look at that, because it's eight thirty to four thirty.
Yeah, I'm not good with math.
Not that it matters, but.
Yeah, so eight hours.
Take your mask off, take your cup, fingers.
If I may, and I know it's closed, I believe this memo had been given to the board.
Yeah.
It addresses something that Mr. Salisbury raised, and it states that in our own memo, that eleven thirty to one is dedicated at rest time, that the dogs would be put into panels in smaller groups or break like lunchtime snacks. So that, that was already in, and then to address enforcement, I believe it was in our presentation as well, there's going to be video on the inside of the building and on the outdoor pen. So if there's questions, Mr. Icardi can come down and view the video.
Okay. So it, it sounds like we should just clarify that if eleven to one is snack, snack time.
Eleven thirty, but.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it says in the, in the.
If you don't have it already.
I think I've already read that, but, no, actually, I haven't read that.
Okay, Brian, any, or anyone else further comments, I guess, about anything?
No.
Okay, so, I mean, yeah, the only comment I really have is that I've been thinking a lot about this over the last several weeks, you know, or months. And I, I have been really on the fence about, you know, what the decision I'm gonna make about this. And I just echo, you know, Ray's comments that this is definitely, I think, gonna be a difficult one for the board to decide on, but with that, unless, unless, unless anyone has anything else, we.
Can I just, for one sec, because you fired off a lot of info at one time. So just to reiterate, ten dogs at once supervised at all times, which we have ten. That's in the decision, but I didn't have that they were supervised at all times, but I can.
It should be.
Yep, I can add that to, it's number six. And then I have, eight is the existing vinyl fence to be continually maintained and in good working order. I can also add the. I can also add the vegetated screening, because that, the trees, I didn't add that in here, which should also be maintained. Um.
Along the rear of the property.
Yep, along the rear of the property.
Yeah, and the, and the exist, is it existing fence.
Yeah, I have the existing fence.
Yeah, they're already, yeah.
Did you, by any chance, did you read this?
I did.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
So. There's that, there's also. You had the sound mitigation, so no gaps between panels. Maximum one foot gap between the top of the fence of the panels and the canopy roof line, essentially.
Yeah, that makes sense, and then, right.
Okay, and then, you, no direct access from indoor dog kennels, kennels to outdoor area.
No, I would just close the doors, so that, what they describe in their, their application is. The dogs would flow in and out, and I, I think that would lend itself to.
I see what you're saying.
Barking.
Okay.
So doors just to be closed.
The other thing you're missing, and I know Brian did bring up, who's in the sound report, was about the, um. Oh, screening of the dogs to make sure that the dogs that are going out, I get them alone. It's actually in the sound report.
Yeah, um.
Either, either one of your applications.
Yeah, it's, um.
Is it?
No, it's not. Yeah, so the applicant actually submitted, should be in your package, just some recommended conditions based on what they had submitted. And one of, I think it's number six, it says each dog shall be evaluated for behavior and temperament before. Being accepted into daycare, any dog showing aggression or bad behavior will not be admitted into the daycare program. That's one that I circled, but, yeah, it wasn't covered in any condition that I had. Number five was another one, which is. Regarding just documentation of vaccination for the pets, which I think is a good one as well. Um.
Which I think is a business practice, I have to agree, is.
It is.
For the Health Union.
It's something that I think, I don't know if it's necessarily within the purview of the ZBA, but if the applicant is willing to put it in the ZBA decision, I mean.
You know, it was close, I think, we got that.
Okay, yep, um, yep, okay.
Awesome.
Number nine is regarding that the acoustic fence, the radium. And then. That's what I had, I think everything else in here was pretty much included in the draft decision, but.
Just the audience banning the entire outdoor space.
Yes.
Which I think they talked about doing anyways tonight. So with that being said, let's just move this on. I will make the motion to accept. Yes, where does it say? To approve.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The draft decision. Along with the. I suppose we just wrote it up.
Yes, with the changes, Rob is.
Changes, changes while he's doing, um. In the conditions that we put on there about taking care of the pets, which is, he's putting that in there.
Okay, give me a second.
I'll, I'll second it, and then, which is the, the other thing is that the. Applicants proposing a quiet time between eleven thirty and one, that should actually be. Part of this condition, so.
You're right, cause it's in his layout, but it's not in the condition, so it should be in the condition.
So. To that effect, number five, which is basically hours of operation are six thirty AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Use the outdoor enclosed dog area limited to, I have eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, so that was what was discussed, but. It would be eight thirty AM to eleven thirty AM and one PM to four thirty PM, is what, okay.
Darling's gonna get them rest and naps, snacks.
Are we ready?
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's any other discussions or anything else that needs to be added or revised.
No, I, I think that, um. It's. I believe. The applicant will control what would be the impacts to this. Particular use. Um, the sound impact and. Um, knowing what can go in by right. Or other uses of this. Parcel, I think that. Mitigating the sound. Um. Makes it a, a much more palatable. Decision to make.
This, now, I'll second that, this may be the only project going in there. That would be, we would be able to do anything about sound with. To mitigate the sound. I don't think there's any, any, we would have no team to mitigate sound, anything else going in there. Because it's a special property.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. So all, should we do a roll call though?
I would do a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
That makes sense.
Brian?
All right.
Brian?
I.
Mr. Voting?
No.
Liz, I?
Nay.
I.
The ayes have it, we have one nay.
Yeah, that passes.
It passes.
All right, so I guess what'll happen is I will make the revisions to the, the decision, sign it, and then, um. Basically, that'll be posted in the town clerk's office, and then there's a twenty day appeal period for anybody who wants to appeal this. Which will be through the town clerk's office. Um. And then we'll also send out the notification to the abutters that the, the decision's been rendered, so.
You want me to do that?
We do, yeah. That's actually something that I, I.
I should do, I should.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Rob, next on the agenda.
All right.
I think we have the applicant, um, on, on film.
Yeah, maybe we'll wait just a second. Angela, just give me one second, I'm gonna clear out, okay?
Angela, we'll speak quick, we got the late twenty.
Yeah, I'll get you guys out. No.
Very serious.
Thank you. Is it still preseason?
No, midnight.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, it's September.
I'm carrying the boy. Good evening, sir.
Take it easy. All right.
Oh, yeah, man, even good on his podium as well. Very good.
Okay, um, so we have next on the agenda Lakeview Estates Bond Reduction Discussion, Rob, can you just kinda? Uh, raise up to speed?
Sure, so I know we had a pretty lengthy discussion, uh, the last meeting, so. Where we stood was, there was basically some work that was associated with phase one regarding a drainage situation. So that has gone in front of the Conservation Commission. I think it was last Wednesday, right, Angela?
Yeah.
Yeah, so last Wednesday, the ball is starting to roll with that, there's gonna be, I think, some more work that's associated with it, um. I think they actually have a, a site visit scheduled for this Saturday to start looking. But basically, the reason why we were stalling on the bond reduction, or that I was recommending, was number one. Wanted to get the official sign off from DPW, because what they have to do is just look through the road completion requirements and basically state that, okay. You've met those requirements and that the bond is getting reduced to a number that would. Essentially, um, cover any improvements that need to be made. The good news is, is that from the, the. Street acceptance standpoint, after talking to Jesse, we're, we're pretty much there, there's a couple little items with some water gates that are getting fixed, I think they actually might have already been fixed. As of last week, and Angela might.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so, so those are all fixed, there's some other minor tweaks that I think that the, that Fafford's working on. The big item right now is still trying to figure out this drainage situation, which I can get into more detail, but. Essentially, that's for phase one, which is, let me pull it up. I think that's Candlelight Lane and Northern Lights Way.
See it.
Phase two is Celestial Way and Lover's Lane, which. Right now, all of those checklist or punch list items for acceptance are completed. So Jesse did the calculations to see what, if, what Fafford is requesting with the reduction to twenty percent, which is allowed. If that will cover the cost for any outline items. There's no other outline punch list items, but we can't, our regulations require us to go to twenty percent, hold that. That's the, the minimum, I guess the maximum that you can reduce to, uh. Prior to street acceptance, so. I. You should have the signed form Js in your packet, I would recommend based on that. What was submitted from DPW that for phase two. That the bond reduction does get reduced, right now it's eight hundred and five thousand dollars to the minimum. Twenty percent, uh, surety, which is one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars. So that's phase two. Phase one, I actually have a question for you, Angela, just for clarity, so. I was looking through my notes. And of course, this came in, I think, it might have been the day I actually started in this position, so. It's a little murky, but. The phase one surety was already reduced from the six thirty to two hundred ninety, correct?
Yes, yes, right.
All right, so.
Suggestion, um, I think DPW or Jesse's suggestion was twenty percent of its initial value.
Correct, which would have been the, that Form J, which is one hundred six thousand.
Yeah.
Um, my initial thought was just because we still are working through the drainage situation, and I talked to Jesse, he seemed to be okay, of course. With the Form J, it's based on the completeness of the road, not necessarily outline items. The, with the drainage situation that's still being worked out, I recommend that it would be reduced to fifty percent. Now, with that, that would mean the initial suggested security was six hundred thirty thousand, so that would be. Above what already is the phase one security, which is two hundred ninety thousand, which sits. So I don't think I would touch that one, if that makes sense. And just leave that alone for the time being, and then when this drainage situation gets fixed. And worked out, I think, you know, the phase, that page can be. Fixed, or reduced. If that makes sense, so, that's my suggestion, um, if you want. To, you know, go to the full reduction to the, the twenty percent, so it goes from two hundred ninety thousand to one hundred and six thousand and fifty-three dollars. You can, it's just my suggestion to leave. A little bit in phase one, I don't anticipate that the drainage improvements would come. To two hundred ninety thousand dollars, cause really, right now, it's an outlet pipe from. A isolated wetland area that they're looking at, or a berm, which is even less money, um. But. It's still, I, I would just recommend keeping that. Surety in place until that's completely permitted and. Under construction.
To that point, Rob, if I could just add, I do have the estimated, like, I guess what would be the bond estimates that Gary or Helen put together for both of the drainage. Solution options for a parcel C, the berm, uh, bond estimate would be forty thousand five hundred dollars. And the inlet pipe would be sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, so. Um, just wanted to add those figures to the conversation, that the two ninety is still, I think, a very, um, thick cushion.
Oh, just for record, I'm just gonna recuse myself, cause, oh, that's right.
But, I mean, if we reduce the bond, I mean. How many years has Angela become my meetings, what are we gonna do without you yet? We spent a long time here.
He's now a member of AARP.
Those are nervous gig.
Not even half of this project, but we're, we're done, we're there. I mean, I guess my only question is there, is there a risk to the town? For us to. Reduce it down to twenty percent?
For the, um, for phase one. Uh, I, I would feel comfortable having more cushion, just because what. The, what's basically being proposed now is, is a berm, it's kind of tough, I wish I could pull up the plan so you could understand it more, but. They're looking at potentially putting in a berm to stop flooding in this isolated wetlands to go into these properties. Initially, the thought was to do an outlet pipe, and that outlet pipe would have to connect to the drainage system that's already in the road. And utilize those basins, so it's. It's not necessarily snowballing, but it could snowball into just a little bit more effort that's needed, there might need to be another pipe that needs to be sized on.
And all, and I'm sorry, Angela, but in all fairness, um, you have done a phenomenal job since you've taken over, so thank you very much. Um, but we also have a long history of drainage on this property. And, um, so I don't think I will be in favor of releasing anymore phase one. Just because of the history. We've. Gone down this road, it didn't work, we've got, I'm not saying this is not gonna work, but I think we need to accept ourselves, just a little bit longer. On my phase one.
And am I able to ask a question, even though I refuse myself, or would I do my general business, so? Cause I guess I'm just curious, cause is the outlet C, that is the same area that's at, that's next to my house, that's why I refuse myself, but. That definitely has been redesigned a lot of.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of time, so I'm just curious, they're talking about a berm over there, or what's the latest?
No, not that.
Brian, not at Vic's and C, it, that we're talking about, it's the inside, um, inside the loop of Candlelight and Northern Lights, so in the. Like two and a half acre parcel, it's not anything to do with the basin.
Okay, I didn't think so, yeah.
Of course, I'll ask, is anticipated, um, ETA when this will be done, Angela? Uh, we're, we're working on it now, what's our anticipated timeframe?
Well, we, we need an, we filed the NOI with the Conservation Commission, which I will point out that they are likely going to require that, most likely. Hire a bond for this work as a condition of the Order of Conditions. Um, you know, if it's issued as well, so the town would still, still be protected on the conservation. Side through a surety bond, or, you know, sometimes the Conservation Commission requires cash bonds, but. Um, we're, depending on how far this NOI process goes, or how long it takes, I'm sorry, um. I, I'd say we'd probably be constructing whatever we're gonna be constructing before the end of this construction season, hopefully.
Well, we could potentially have her come back. November to summer meetings, release the remaining of this bond, if you held on to it for, no, three months.
Or perhaps after the Order of Conditions is issued, if there's a bond attached to that, then we could.
That's what I would recommend.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
And I hope you appreciate it, Angela, we've. Long since before you, we had all kinds of issues, and you've done a phenomenal job, yes, thank.
I'm aware. Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on? You know, Rob's proposed plan? To deal with these bonds?
No, I agree with you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve pretty much the reduction to twenty percent for phase two. And then reduction to fifty percent for phase one, I believe that's.
Well, we're already there.
Already there.
Yeah, so.
Take no measures on phase one, till. Um.
The NOI.
And why.
Oh, then we do fifty percent, or are you gonna do twenty percent?
We can even go to the full.
Oh, you'll go on, so originally you were saying fifty percent.
Yeah.
But we'll just go keeping it, not touching it.
Okay, so I would recommend.
On phase two.
Yep, so I would recommend the motion that you reduce the bond from eight hundred five thousand dollars to the suggested one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars. For phase two, which is Celestial Way and Lover's Lane.
And that will be my.
I'll second that one for you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in, um. Favor of reducing the bond to the amount that Rob had stated. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, say no.
You know, everybody.
We will. Have her back, Angela, unless I reserve, Angela will be back, um, after the NOI.
Yeah, absolutely, so. We can put, you know, whenever, we have, we post the agenda. A week in advance, so just, you know, well, Angela, you and I have talked, we'll, we can get you on the agenda as soon as that's. Cleared up, all right?
Yeah, sounds good, thanks folks, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good eye, I'm good, love.
Bye-bye. Hey, um, Rob, next on the agenda, open meeting law certification online training.
Oh, yes.
Does it sound like we all need to do our, our training?
No, so it's actually not required, but the state actually did roll out this new open meeting law certification. It's an online mass.gov training seminar, and apparently, like, from what I've been told, cause I know our HR director did, and she said it was really good. And it's something that it's not required, but recommended if you can, cause I know getting brushing up on open meeting laws is always helpful, so. I can send you the link, I just wanted to bring it up during this meeting, um. Just to let you know.
I know.
Not.
I did it for work, though.
You've done it in the past. I heard nothing, no, um, so anyway, that was it.
All right, well, thank you, um.
And then there's also.
Um, yes, thank you for the suggestion, Rob.
Oh, no problem, I thought yours, never mind, okay, you're welcome.
Before we go to the minutes.
Yes.
Um and I know I've spoken to Rob about this, I've spoken to other people about it, I'd like to have to put it on the record. Um I would like to know the findings, land court for Maple Street, the multiple.
Oh, okay.
I mean, this board was responsible for putting the slap of the seesaw on them, uh I think it's terrible to find out. Evidently, it's been decided in court, but we haven't informed.
There was a trial, or was there?
Never guessed trial.
They settled?
Haven't heard the final. Brian, the scene is done, so I would like to. Get a judge to get information.
That's a good point, actually.
So I just wanted to put it on the record that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, do you? I don't know if that can even, I imagine that can be brought up as general business at a meeting, if you want to actually discuss it as an update in a public caring setting. But I can ask town council to make sure that there's obviously nothing that, you know, can't be shared in a public setting, but.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, just to keep people aware, I know that's that was a, it's been a hot topic throughout.
Sorry to rely it, but.
Okay, all right, well, Rob will look into that, uh approval of meeting minutes, has everyone had a chance to read the meeting minutes? Any changes for Rob?
I will to approve minutes as drafted.
Second.
Here we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August first.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm pushing the close.
Second motion?
Um all those in favor of closing the meeting to go watch football? All right, the meeting is officially closed, thank you.